All right, welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. This is our April work session. I hope everyone had a good Easter weekend. I'd like to remind you all that we are continuing to use the Zoom platform because of the continuing coronavirus pandemic. And this meeting is being live streamed on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note this meeting is being recorded. If anyone has any technical or connection difficulties, please contact our community engagement manager, Morgan Lassiter, at 336-222-5073 for support. For staff comments or to address council at the appropriate time during the meeting, you can use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone that will alert our host that you wish to speak and they will call on you again at the appropriate time. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Balchutus and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Protem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff presenting when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman. Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman. Nolan, you're here? I'm not hearing your audio, but I see you speaking. All right, so we know no one's with us. Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Principal Planner Jamie Lawson. Jamie, I'm not getting your audio. Try again. I'm not hearing Jamie, but we do know she's on the call and I can see her. Planning Manager Conrad O'Meadow.
Here.
Transportation Engineer and Operations Manager Brian Tenet.
Here.
PTRC Community Development Director Michael Blair.
Here.
Lead for North Carolina Fellow Louisa Schaller.
Here.
Director of Recreation and Parks Tony Laws.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. For those with any audio connection difficulties, please alert us if you're still not able to speak when you need to during the meeting. Item A on our agenda is 2021 to 2022 Annual Action Plan for CDBG and Home. This time we'll recognize PTRC Community Development Director Michael Blair. Welcome back, Michael.
Thank you so much for having me. Good evening, Mayor and Council and everybody else. This is for our 2122 Annual Plan for the Community Development Block Grant. Every year we receive this grant, you've received it probably since 1975 or '74, I'm not sure. But what we're proposing is to hold two public hearings regarding that draft plan. The first hearing would be held April 20th and the second would propose to hold on May 4th at the council meeting. The reason for this is that traditionally, these annual plans for entitlement cities like Burlington, Greensboro, Winston, Raleigh are due on May 15th. Over the last few years, because of coronavirus and some other issues, the plan has usually been submitted up until August 27th by November 17th. We'd like to get this plan submitted to HUD in the traditional timeframe of May 15th. Basically, just to give you a little background on what we've got, the HUD has awarded the city $470,243 for this upcoming fiscal year that starts for us July 1st. What we have done is broken down into large categories of what the plan will probably entail. The administration is 20%, which is $94,000. And I can project this, if you'd like, the actual summary, or I could just briefly go through it, because all this is is setting up the public hearings, whatever you would prefer.
Councilmembers, anyone need to see that or it is in our agenda packet as well?
I don't need to see it.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, great. So I'll just, public facilities and infrastructure, $275,659. Public services is limited to a 15% cap, okay? The last couple of years, because of the CARES Act and coronavirus, that has been uncapped. So you have funded about $140,000 a year. This has been, and this new funding, which we've gone back to the original 15%, and that's going to be $70,536. And then emergency rehabilitation repair, $30,000. And, you know, there's also additionally, we approve the home program funds that are coming from Greensboro as the lead entity. And that funding is set at, let's see, about $400,000 within elements, including elements in Burlington. Most of that's going to be for rehabilitation, where again, another RFP later in the year like we did a few months ago and award that money out. So that's the general scope of the annual plan. On the 20th, we'll have a more complete draft and hold a public hearing. And on the final meeting, any additional comments, any changes can be made. And then we approve submitting, or the council approves submitting the plan to HUD by May 15th.
Very good. Councilmembers, any question? All right. Thanks, Michael.
We're good? All right.
We're good, just.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. We look forward to the meetings and we hope we have good participation, so.
We'll do our best.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda, Item B, Historic Preservation Commission, HPC Quarterly Report and Fiscal Year 2021 Historic Preservation Fund Certified Local Government Grant Application. This time we recognize Principal Planner Jamie Lawson. Jamie, is your audio working? I'm still not hearing Jamie. We do have a slide up.
I'll text your mayor, just give me one second. Conrad, I think Conrad's on the call. He may be trying to help her, but we could get started if you'd like.
Yeah, if someone else wants to try to present initially.
Mayor Balchutus, this is Molly Whitlatch. I can present the first few slides if you'd like.
Sure.
Is that any better?
There we go. Very good.
Okay, great. Sorry about that.
No problem. It's been a tech difficulty evening.
I just got started, so I don't know how I feel about that. All right, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Jamie Lawson, Principal Planner in the Planning Department here and Staff Liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm pleased to also introduce Lori Bryan, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and Molly Whitlatch, Vice Chair. Molly's going to run through the quarterly report presentation for you tonight. And also present is Heather Slane of HMW Preservation. She's our consultant who's going to discuss the architectural survey update. Before I hand it off to Molly, let me just see if I can advance the slide here. There we go. I'd like to first just highlight the current members of the Historic Preservation Commission and thank them for their dedicated work on the commission. And I will now ask Molly to run through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you, Mayor Balchutus and members of council. We appreciate the opportunity to give this report. We do anticipate making more regular reports in the future, but for this initial one, I wanted to just give a brief background about how the historic commission came into being and some of the benefits that we bring to the city. So I'm going to start way back in 1966. This is a photo of Lyndon Johnson signing the National History Preservation Act, which was really kind of a new era for historic preservation in the United States. Under this act, the federal government created the National Register of Historic Places, which I'll talk about a little bit later, as well as the Certified Local Government Program. These are administered by the National Park Service along with the State Historic Preservation Office. And then, under that, the states delegate to local governments through enabling legislation, in our case, it's Chapter 160D. And then the local cities, in this case, City of Burlington, decides the district boundaries for historic districts and how to administer those. Let me go to the next slide. So the Certified Local Government Program, as I mentioned, is through the National Park Service. It's a partnership between the National Park Service and the City of Burlington. There's only 51 of these in the entire state. And there's only 2,054 in the country, so it's a special designation. There's a lot that goes into qualifying for that and it also reaps a number of different benefits. The first of which is grants. And again, I'm not going to talk about the survey grants, we're going to talk about that a little bit later, but that's an example of funding that we can qualify for that we wouldn't be able to if we weren't a certified local government. There's also grants for development activities, pre-development, things like that. And the CLGs are able to direct that federal money into their city through this program. It also allows local governments, like the City of Burlington, to have input on what historic properties receive recognition through national register nominations. So for instance, May Hosery is a recent example of a property that we reviewed and awarded or approved the national register nomination to go forward. And then that project was able to get federal tax credit funding. As a CLG, we have some requirements that we have to keep up with. One of them is to maintain an inventory of our historic properties and that goes to the survey that's being done. We also have to establish and maintain a qualified historic preservation commission. And part of that qualification is another benefit to the city because we are required to participate in a certain amount of training. And that gives the city a board of trained preservation professionals that the members of the community are able to use as a resource. And then the third requirement is that we're required to enforce the state and the local legislation, and that's our guidelines, which are now called standards. So I just wanted to spend a brief minute kind of distinguishing between the National Register of Historic Places and our local historic districts, because they're two separate things, although there is some overlap. So the National Register of Historic Places is a list of places that are deemed worthy of preservation by the federal government. And that's based on a number of different factors. Age is kind of the factor that we think of the most, and that's typically if it's 50 years or older. So another advantage to the survey that's coming up is that when the original survey was done, it only looked back 50 years to the 1940s. There's a number of properties that would be deemed historic at this point that weren't back then, but that's kind of the general timeframe. Significance can be significance relating to something that happened there or somebody that lives there, Abraham Lincoln's birthplace or something like that. Or it can be the type of property that kind of embodies a special period of time or a method of construction. And then integrity refers to the ability of the property to convey that significance. And often when we talk about integrity in a historic property, we're talking about kind of, does it still have those qualities that made it special to begin with? And that's, that goes, feeds into kind of what our guidelines or our standards say, because our standards are created to kind of maintain the integrity or the special historic character of those properties. Once the properties lose integrity, so if they're altered in a significant way, that they would lose that national register designation at some point. Okay, I can go to the next slide. So I think everyone is familiar with these different districts, and the first five, these are all national registered districts. So these all have the federal designation. Only the last two are local historic districts. So I think that there is some visual recognition. If you look at the districts that have been regulated under the Historic Commission and our local legislation have been maintained at a level that has preserved the integrity more so than some of these other districts that I think we're all kind of familiar with. So in the city, we have a zoning overlay. And like I said, it matches up fairly closely with the National Register District, but not exactly. So this is the West Davis Fountain Place Local District, and what is shown in green is the zoning overlay. There's 183 unique property owners in this historic district. So almost all of these properties are national register, but they are all within the local district and are governed under the guidelines. There are some exceptions sometimes. The one that I can think of most recently is the Red Cross building on West Davis Street. It's within the local historic district, but it was never added to the national register. I think it may be when the new surveys completed, it may be eligible for that. But in that case, that was a commercial property that didn't have the benefit of qualifying for tax credits because it wasn't on the national register. And then this is the Glencoe District. And there's 47 unique property owners there. They're primarily homes, but there's also some commercial buildings. Okay, and then aside from the historic districts, we also have local landmarks. And this is a list of the landmarks. Picket Hosery. This is something that the commission will review these applications and approve advancement of them. In our last meeting, we reviewed the application for Picket Hosery on Webb Avenue and approved advancing that landmark application to the state. So as I mentioned earlier, the historic districts kind of embody what our local government has determined to be of importance to Burlington's cultural and historical and architectural history. And the city, through the process of deciding to create a historic district, also created the Historic Preservation Commission to regulate it. So some of our responsibilities, again, are similar to the CLG. We're responsible for maintaining an inventory of the historic resources. We review and make recommendations for properties to be designated as historic landmarks and historic districts. And we meet on a monthly basis to review certificates of appropriateness, which is kind of the permit that a homeowner has to get in order to make a change to the exterior of a historic property. So just by way of example, in 2019, there were 60 applications to the Historic Commission. 21 of those were major and required a hearing. Last year, there were 58 applications. It was a little slower during COVID. 15 of those were major applications that required a hearing. This is a quasi judicial board, so we are similar to a court proceeding in that we hear evidence and our decisions can be appealed. And what we look at in those, making those decisions, is whether the requested change falls within the the guidelines or the standards, as they're now called. There's a recent change in the statute that changes that verbiage to clarify that it's not, it's not really optional. These are, these are standards that our city has decided are necessary to preserve the character of those properties. So I just wanted to touch on some of the benefits of historic neighborhoods. And I've included in your packet some information that I'll reference in just a minute, but the, this is more so true for the downtown neighborhoods, but these are strong walkable communities that support the downtown revitalization and create a sense of place. And I know that the council is familiar with this idea of sense of place, because this is a big part of Belong in Burlington. But it just gives people a place that they all have something in common with and memories there. It supports our cultural heritage and our architectural history. There's a lot of evidence about restoring homes versus tearing them down and building new homes in that they, it has some environmental benefits and that there's less going into the landfill. And then the economic benefits are pretty significant. There's a lot of research about the fact that historic, the property values are more stable in historic neighborhoods. This also supports, as I mentioned, downtown revitalization and tourism. And then tax credits are a big factor. So properties that are on the National Historic Register are eligible and have maintained their integrity are eligible for federal and state tax credits. And this is a really big deal. I've included, I think, a couple handouts in your packets about the the tax credits. So for their state tax credits, and that can be up to 15% for qualified rehabilitation of owner occupied properties. And then there's also the commercial tax credits, which are basically the the thing that allows projects like May Hosery and Picket Hosery to, you know, renovate these old mills and create downtown housing and things like that. They wouldn't be able to do that without this type of economic incentive. And so for those, there's a 20% federal tax credit as well as a 15% state tax credit that they can qualify for. I've also included an article in your packet. It's a recent article from the National Chamber of Commerce that talks about the economic benefits of preservation to downtowns. And there's a website called placeeconomics.com that really goes into this further if you're interested. If you can go to the next slide. I wanted to highlight just a couple of examples locally. So this is a property, it's actually across the street from me on West Davis Street. This was purchased in 2014 for $145,000. The homeowners went through two rounds of tax credits, so they, you have to do a certain amount of dollar value renovation in order to qualify. So they did this in two separate tax years. This property, I don't know who all was on the council at the time, but there was a tour that Governor McCrory did years ago of historic tax credit projects. And this was one of the houses on the tour. It was really touted as a success story. So this, after two rounds of tax credits and a massive renovation, I apologize, I'm downtown. This property sold in March 2021 for $430,000. So that's really tripling the value of this property. It's quite significant. Get to the next one. So the next, I think everyone's familiar with Glencoe Mill. This is what it looked like prior to the houses being restored. This is a more current picture of it. So this, this property was basically completely abandoned. They were using these houses as practice for the fire department. They were basically worthless. There's 66 parcels out there now, and the assessed value this year was $8.8 million. This is a tax credit project, so this is just money coming from the federal government into our community to not just renovate these historic properties and create pretty special places for people to live, but also really increasing the value of our tax base. So I'm going to turn it back over to Jamie, and she will introduce our consultant. But if anyone has any other questions, be happy to speak further.
Great, thanks, Molly. Yes, now I'd like to introduce Heather Slane. And Heather is our consultant from HMW Preservation. She is handling the architectural survey update. So Heather, why don't you give us a brief overview of where we are?
Sure. So I wrote down what I was going to say, so I could be quick. As Molly mentioned, one of the CLG requirements is that the commission maintained an inventory of historic resources. So the survey project that is taking place this year is focused on updating the survey data that was collected during two surveys of the area in 1982 and in 1991. The former survey resulted in the designation of the West Davis Street Fountain Place National Register Historic District in 1984. And it's important to note that the national district overlaps with the local district, as Molly mentioned, though the boundary and though this survey in particular has no direct impact on the local district, its designation or its boundaries. The survey update is partially funded by a Historic Preservation Fund grant and will include updating the documentation with exterior photographs and written descriptions for buildings in West Burlington, which for the purpose of the project is defined as the area bounded by South Church Street, West Webb Avenue and Tarleton Avenue. It will include updated documentation of 339 properties that were surveyed in 1982 and 1991, as well as 29 properties within the National Historic District that did not have full survey files completed in those early surveys, largely because those resources were not 50 years old when those first surveys were finished. It may include documentation of additional architecturally significant buildings and neighborhoods within that study area. And it will also include a historic and architectural context for the area from roughly 1940 to 1975. So sort of picking up where the histories in the National Register District left off. It's important to note that while recommendations for new or expanded national historic districts are typical as part of this type of survey, no new national districts will be created as part of the survey. And there will be no recommendations or actions taken regarding the local historic district in this area. There is a public information meeting, a virtual meeting that is specific to the survey project that will be taking place next Wednesday, April 14th at 6:00 PM. So we'll be presenting this information and more information about what, what people should expect to see with the survey at that public meeting. And that is all I have, so I'm going to hand it back over to Jamie unless you all have questions.
Questions from council on either of those presentations?
Just before, just before we end our presentation, I just wanted to add one last item for this. So staff is asking for City Council to provide additional guidance regarding the fiscal year 21 Historic Preservation Fund Certified Local Grant, Government Grant Application. And the grant application has a deadline of April 16th, 2021. We would be submitting an application to update the local historic overlay design guidelines. So should council desire for us to do so, we can add that on as an agenda item for tomorrow night's meeting for you to consider staff submission of a formal grant application. And Molly, Heather and myself are available if you have any questions on the presentation or the request.
Very good. Any questions from council regarding any of those items?
No, I just want to say that I think that it's important that we follow through on this grant, especially so that we can review our design review manual. Because I think there are a number of things that aren't as current as we might hope they were and will have an impact on the people within this property area. I think it's important for us to go ahead with this.
Just, just for clarification, this is just for data purposes only. Is that correct? Just so we have current data?
The survey that you're referring to, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct.
As far as the design manual, I know ours is old. Is there a recommendation for how current those stay?
They are typical. I know when I spoke to representatives from the state recently and we reviewed the guidelines together, you know, they recognized that guidelines from 1991 are antiquated and are needed of an update. So I'm not sure if there's a particular time, you know, every five or so years, but definitely is a recognition to.
Jamie, maybe, as we have a benefit, I have a Heather on the call, maybe she could comment on that.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Um, the, the design standards are sort of meant to be a living document, so it sort of depends on the municipality and the staffing levels as to how often they do updates. I think some communities that do updates really regularly and sort of evaluate every couple of years. They don't do an overhaul, but they do a sort of, you know, amendments every couple of years. Raleigh is really good about it. Greensboro is pretty good about it. Most communities sort of let them be and then are reevaluating every 15 or 20 years, which is almost a little bit too long. But I've done standards in the last year and a half for two different communities. One of them dated to 2000 One of them dated to 2001, and one was from 2006. So there are certainly communities with standards that are not quite as old as yours that are, that are already doing sort of major overhauls. And the main things that the state is looking to add at this point are disaster preparedness and recovery standards, which for the middle of the state is not as significant as for the coastal communities. But giving some guidance on that and making sure that there's a lot of guidance on sustainability and energy efficiency standards. So people are thinking about solar panels and different kinds of things that homeowners are thinking of and making sure there's guidance for those. And replacement materials, as some of the, the historic materials are starting to age and need to be replaced to really have clear guidance on what, what materials are appropriate for replacement in the historic districts. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Any objection to including the request for the addition to the agenda tomorrow?
I think at some point in time, it may be with some input from the, the commission, we need to certainly address the issue of making upgrades to the other item we're discussing here, too. If it's been 1991, there's got to be some some leverage there, I believe, if we want to try to keep this, this particular program in place and, and grow it in the proper way.
I did have a question for staff. I believe we have some vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission. And I know we're accepting applications for next year's round, but do we know if we have a slate of candidates to fill some of those vacancies? To keep the, since the national standard is that the board be functional and properly?
Yeah, great question. So as we look at it, we've got some conflicting documents here at the city. So depending on which document you look at, we should have from clean five to 12 members. Staff recommends that we kind of settle at seven members.
Okay.
And as you can see from the list in the first slide, we have six now. And so we're working to bring you the documents to get us, get us clarified at seven.
Okay.
Meantime, we have, I'm going to ask Ms. Lassiter to join the call. And I think we are actively recruiting for boards and commissions. Is historic preservation on the current list, Morgan?
Yes.
You want to talk about that for a moment?
Sure. Yeah, we're advertising for all the open positions and like Harden was saying, recognizing that we, Jamie had brought that to our attention a couple of weeks ago. So recognizing we might need to fill that board to get to the number it needs to be. And we've been directly advertising for, for HPC as well as the other boards and commissions.
Very good. All right. But we do have a forum, since this is a quasi judicial board and they make some important decisions for our community. So I want to make sure we were at the right level.
I see Jamie and Mike both nodding. Is it, we're in a good place? So there, the other question we have is if, if council's so inclined in pursuing, we'll, we'll need to set aside $12,000 in the FY 2122 budget. We can obviously incorporate that as we're right, kind of at the, almost finished with putting together a draft budget for council review. It's currently not included, but we'll certainly work that in if that's council's wishes. That would be a $12,000 match to a grant application that would be a total project cost of 30,000.
And that is to update the guidelines, correct?
If that's council's, yes, sir. So if that's council's wishes, we can go ahead and get that going and back in the, in the
Any objections from council to allocate that?
No.
All right. Very good. Jamie, Heather, we appreciate you being here. And Lori and Molly, thank you so much for your service to the community, and thank you for joining in the call this evening.
Thank you.
Pleasure. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item C on our agenda, annexation requests. This time I'll recognize our principal planner again, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Staff received a petition for voluntary annexation for 1163 North River View Drive, along with a utility request for water and sewer services. If you can see the map on the screen that shows the property location. And I'm going to try to flip to, are you able to see the utility map as well?
Yes, we can.
Great. Pursuant to the city's adopted utility connection service procedures, this request was approved by the city manager's office, and now it's forwarded to you. At this time, staff is not recommending that the city annex the property that you defer annexation. However, you may consider the petition in the future per, per the terms of the voluntary annexation petition. Pursuant to City Code 40.40, we ask that you add this item to tomorrow night's consent agenda. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you have on this particular matter.
Just to clarify, this is to approve the utility connection, but not the annexation at the present time?
Correct. To defer the annexation.
Very good.
Technically, the, the utility connection is already being approved by the manager per the ordinance allows that. So it's just consideration of annexation.
Okay. Any questions from council regarding this parcel? All right. You have another parcel this evening as well?
Yes, we do. So the next request is for 1270 Kirkpatrick Road. And same with the last application, the staff received a petition for voluntary annexation along with a utility request. This one was just for water services. So you can see the property that's highlighted in red as well as the utility request map. Again, pursuant to the utility connection service procedures, this request was approved by the city manager and now is being forwarded to you. The utilities have been approved, and at this time, we're asking for council to also defer annexation. You may consider this in the future. However, pursuant to City Code 40.40, we ask that you add this item to your tomorrow night's consent agenda as well.
Very good. Any questions from council on this item? Any objection to including these two parcels on tomorrow evening's agenda? All right. Thank you, Jamie.
Very much. Have a good evening.
You too. All right. With that, we'll move to item D on our agenda, the American Rescue Plan Act and Aid to Local Governments presentation. At this time, we recognize, joining us for the first time, our LFNC fellow, Luisa Schaller.
Hi, everyone. I'm Luisa Scholler. For those of you who I haven't met, as Mayor Bultus just said, I'm a Lead for North Carolina Fellow. I am also an Elon 2020 grad, placed in a UNC trained cohort to participate in a one-year fellowship aimed at placing recent graduates in municipality, municipalities across the state. I've been working under Rachel Kelly since November of last year, and I've been working under, on a variety of projects under her. Over the past few weeks, though, I have been paying attention to some congressional activity going on that's relevant to you all and some funding opportunities. So I was asked to share information on some of the webinars I have attended and information we have received from partners like League of, National League of Cities, the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and additional state partners like NC Metro Mayor. So I'm going to go ahead and share.
Very good. We have that screen?
Yeah. Let me know if you can't see anything at any point. Sorry. There we go.
Very good.
Okay. So what the ARP is, it became law on March 11th. It's seen as a historic investment in municipal governments. So for the first time, all 19,000 municipal governments are entitled to non-competitive federal formula grants from the US Treasury Department. So this is direct funding, meaning that all cities, towns, and villages are entitled to these grants. And they're grants, not loans, and they're obligated and not in any way mingled with aid obligated to other state or county governments. These, this aid is also protected from state or county interference. And the payment process for the American Rescue Plan, the funds will be received within two tranches. Part one will be received within 60 days of the president's signature. So he signed the plan March 11th of this year. So 60 days following, that will be May 10th, 2021. And part two, the funds will be given out one year after the first allocation. So the funding for both of these tranches is available until December 31st, 2024. And you can still get the second batch, even if you have not spent or obligated the first batch by that date. So Burlington is expected to get close to $12 million, $12 million in funding. All municipalities are waiting on Treasury to provide an accurate and official calculation, so that is still just an estimate. But that is what we have to go on right now. Treasury is also going to release guidance for eligible expenditures. I'm going to talk about that on the next slide. But it is expected that these guidances will be received before that first shipment on May 10th. So again, they'll probably take around 60 days in order to develop that guidance. But that's relevant to how dispersment is going to go and implementation is going to run. So as far as eligible expenditures go, there are four categories, four large categories that funds can be distributed by. So the first is to broadly respond to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. So for this, for this first item, this eligible expenditure is no more restrictive than the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund. And this first bullet point again is seen as a pretty flexible option that's going to cover a lot of what municipalities are going to want to address. That second bullet point, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the metro city non-entitlement unit of local government or county that are performing such essential work, or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. So this one is broadly covering employment, and you, it allows municipality to provide up to $13 per hour above regular wages. So it's the first two. The next two kind of broad categories. Number three, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such metropolitan city non-entitlement units or county due to the COVID public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the city non-entitlement unit or county prior to the emergency. So this will allow for revenue replacement. And then the fourth point is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. You'll notice that this one is perhaps the shortest, most vague, and those investments do not necessarily need to be related to COVID. That is the only one that does not spell out a specific requirement to be tied to the public health emergency. So for that one, as with the rest of the other three, we're waiting on a lot of guidance from Treasury in order to more clearly identify what is and is not eligible. But those are the four main categories so far. So again, Treasury guidance will be crucial. The US Conference of Mayors was also sharing some speculations about some quote unquote potential gray areas and how municipalities might be able to fund certain projects that don't necessarily fall neatly into one category or another. So the example that they shared was one about an infrastructure project that was slightly beyond the explicitly named water, sewer, and broadband projects. They were saying you might be able to stress that this, that, that investment is related to the negative economic impact when you're explaining your project. So for example, if you have downtown business districts, you could say that several businesses had to be closed due to the pandemic. Those closings impacted a broader set of businesses in the downtown district, which, and then that geographically defined area of negative impacts could be tied back to the overall COVID impact and potentially relating, related to a downtown enhancement project like streetscaping or parking. So in that sense, they're sort of tying in as much of that negative economic impact from that first bullet point in order to help cover something that maybe doesn't neatly fall into that fourth category. So moving into regulatory requirements. These webinars I attended briefly covered permissions, restrictions, and requirements. So governments can transfer funds to private nonprofit organization, someone involved with the transportation of passengers or cargo, or special purpose units. There are no restrictions on local governments prohibiting tax cuts or local stimulus payments either, which is of note and interesting. As far as restrictions go, you cannot use the money for pension funds. And what is also important to note for all dispersment and implementation of the funds is that the Treasury Department will require periodic reports with detailed accounting of the uses of the funds. If those are not kept up appropriately, you could be required to repay the funds in full to Treasury. So several recommendations are to think about now who is going to be that person recording, recording your activity, and who is going to be that person reporting that information to Treasury. So NLC had developed these five principles. As you all start to think about how you're going to spend and allocate the money, their first recommendation is to use dedicated grants and programs first, whenever possible. And so to save this money for gaps and priorities, not eligible for other federal or state assistance programs. Two, this is a big point, assess government operations and community needs. So there's a recommendation that valuable staff and stakeholders weigh in, and there's a comprehensive needs assessment or a hearing session, probably multiple of those in order to develop a, a community informed plan. Number three, prioritizing fiscal stability and returning to work by saving projects for earmarks. Four, again, like I said, they want you to create a long-term information infrastructure for future leaders and to make sure that you're being accountable to the funds you're receiving. And number five, recommend, just a recommendation that since your members of Congress help you get this money, you sort of repay that by inviting them to reopenings or been cuttings, et cetera. So that was the conclusion of the first explanation of the ARP. But when weighing these principles for prioritization in respect to item three, which identifies the earmarks, I was also asked to provide a brief overview of potential earmark funding, earmark project funding opportunities. So also cover that briefly. This is from an ICMA webinar I attended. So the basic situation with earmarks right now is that House members can now submit up to 10 project requests. Each representative will have their own deadlines for receiving project proposals. But on the flip side, those members also have to submit their requests to subcommittees by April 15th. So your member has to select and determine which, which 10 projects, if 10, they would like to submit and then get those to the subcommittee by April 15th. So it's coming up quite quickly. And the basic information needed to submit your project request to your member is fairly basic. So you need a proposed recipient and contact information, need the amount of a request, a basic budget is all they need. And an explanation of the request, its purpose and its justification. It is okay if it is a local benefit. There are no specifics announced for the Senate Committee requirement right now. So it's expected that they'll enter into a similar process, but there might be some slight changes. But all we know right now is the House's process. And again, the individual members' deadlines for receiving project requests for their jurisdictions is, it varies depending on the member. So these are the kind of funding categories that are available. These are the House subcommittees that, and committees that will be receiving the funding request. So it can cover projects relating to agriculture and rural development, commerce, justice and science, energy and water development, so on and so forth. It's pretty of our broad categories. As far as making the top ten, important questions to consider might include, can this project be obligated within twenty twenty-two? Does it align with important project priorities in DC such as economic development, COVID recovery, environmental justice? Those are three major topics that are seen to be priorities and might be looked upon favorably. If there's a local match available, it's kind of seen as having some community pull and community investment in the project as well. Similarly, if the federal government is able to finish or get a project across the finish line or fill a gap in funding, that might also look attractive. And then again, regional statewide or national significance of the project also under consideration. For completing the forums, your applicants are asked to demonstrate local need while also justifying federal investment. Provide as much information as possible and answer questions asked. And then you, you most of us complete the application on time for your member. And then if selected from that point, ensure that your representative submits to the appropriate subcommittee by their deadline of April fifteenth. So there's quite a bit of partnership going on there.
Can I ask you a couple of questions on that, please?
Yes.
The, the completion date for that is still twenty twenty-four, is that correct, on this particular earmarks?
On earmarks? On the twenty twenty-four deadline was in reference to the ARP.
So there's, are there any earmarks at all in, in terms of the completion date on this, this, this particular project?
It has to be obligated within federal fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
But how long in terms of it has to be spent in terms of the, the, the completion of the project itself?
I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head. I can look at that.
Okay. The, the local match, is that a, what percentage of the match would that be locally?
There are no specifications on that. To my knowledge, it can be whatever community is willing and able to contribute.
Mr. Owen, I think in, we, we chatted with Jennifer Emo at the Ferguson Group, and I think what she said, the obviously the more match you're offering, there's no magic number. There's an art, I guess, to the whole earmark process. You know, it's, it's been gone for a number of years. So there's not a lot of great memory in DC about how it all worked. So it'll be, you know, redeveloping the art, but what she does believe, obviously she does a lot of work with the federal agencies, the more match you put on the table, the more attractive your project looks. And because the, you know, the, for the federal dollar gets stretched. But there's no magic number. And then Luisa, if I'm not mistaken, I think will also, you would apply for these through some existing programs, some existing federal programs. And so each of those programs may have some rules and parameters. Is that correct, Alisa, or?
That's correct. So under each of these categories that I just mentioned, these committees, they all have specific projects categories available that you apply through. So this is a very simplistic overview. But on the Ferguson Group did put together a pretty thorough list of project categories. And yes, they all do often come with existing federal departmental requirements.
So Harold, I think for instance, the Land and Water Conservation Fund would fall up under this. So you know, that's something we've applied for in the past from some Parks and Rec or natural resources type projects and you might submit something to the Land and Water Conservation Fund that gets funded in an earmark.
Right. Now, I was just thinking about the the McIntosh situation with the, the park there. Also, i- i- if I'm, if I'm not mistaken on this, the transportation and housing and urban development, that's a pretty broad, broad subject there. But that's, that's interesting, especially as we consider looking at Ohioy sixty-two South in terms of making some transportation improvements too. This is interesting here. Deadline on this, guys?
April fifteenth.
Thank God, that's pretty quick.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
Anybody going home tonight? You staying up the rest of the week?
We've been fast and furious towards the end of last week on this. Rachel, Luisa put in a lot of time. Nolan, Peggy and Bob have also been engaged as we're trying to wrap up budget. So we've been kind of think through like, okay, what's in this year's budget? What are good projects that are better for ARP funds? Okay, so you got that taken care of those that maybe plot, swap, put those in different buckets. And then what's left is, you know, do we try to pitch earmarks? And so one thing that Luisa, Luisa hasn't mentioned is so the House has the April fifteenth deadline, but the Senate, their rules are still a little vague, their, their rules, their, their procedures are a little bit vague at this point, still haven't been refined. So we know that each House member can submit ten projects for their entire district. It's not known yet what the Senate can submit. So we've got, I guess, two bites at the apple, if you will, on that. Rachel, anything else you would add to that?
Only to, to share sort of the nuance about the two bites of the apple. We've been told by staff members that Congressman Bud won't be submitting earmarks. So we do have an opportunity on the Guilford County side with Congresswoman Manning. And then of course, for the rest of Burlington on the elements county side, we'll, we'll look to our senators to, to speak with them about potential earmark projects.
And also back to the through the ARA plan, the GFA, GFOA has put together a, a really concise document in terms of allocation and potential handling spending of these funds that's available online. If anybody would like to, to look into that. I know Peggy, I'm sure, you know, will be aware of this, but in, in the GFOA, I will say this, that it's mentioned in several different occasions that finance officers will play a critical role in highlighting the need to use ARPA funds purely for that towards long-term financial stability and substantial operating performance. And I do believe that's something that what I've been working to league as we're talking about is, is something that's going to be recognized and, and highly, highly recommended is that it's that the management staff in the city, especially that about a finance director is looking not only at what is fit now with the cost of utilizing or that, that particular project, what it may save or what it may cost the municipality in the long run to compare it to benefits it would, it should, should gather from it. So there's a lot of unanswered questions, is it not?
Yep, sir. And it's coming fast.
Yeah.
It's coming very fast.
Yes, it is. And it's
It's, it's interesting, Mr. Owen, that the money may get here before the Treasury guidelines get here.
That's what I heard today.
Yeah, that's what I've heard as well and sitting in the White House calls and NLC calls and.
Odds are it is. That's what's going to happen, which, what do you think about that?
But I'm thankful. There's been a lot of feedback provided through different organizations and the kind of federal folks have been doing a lot of listening. So I'm hopeful that that ends up being kind of a two-way streak as helping the local governments or let us kind of shape how we need those categories. Because obviously this pandemic's hit different areas in very different ways, are less in a lot of ways. And, and so we may not need to spend things the same way that community.
Is Peggy on the line tonight?
I think she is, Harold. We'll get her dialed in.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Peggy, have you heard yet if the, in sixty days and been, and been a CDBG money, or CDBG city, we should be the one of the first ones to, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get the money in sixty days. That money invested, do, do we get to keep or do we make interest on it before we spend?
Well, what little interest there is to be made, I would assume so.
Well, that's, I just think, want to bring that up.
Every little bit helps.
Absolutely.
I know we talked at our last meeting about doing kind of a retreat semi-format kind of session coming up. I think this would be a great topic for us to include, to talk strategy. I had the opportunity at a White House listening session with municipal leaders to basically ask the question of like, should we be looking at the damage done by the pandemic and kind of people who've lost ground, businesses that have lost ground, or should we be looking forward at like, how do we build resiliency in the community to be able to survive the next thing that hits our communities? And their answer was it's up to you. Like what, what is the biggest bang for your buck in your community? How can your community best position itself to thrive? And so I think asking our question councils like that, questions like that, and having a format like that upcoming session to discuss it, it would be really beneficial.
But there are no, there are no restrictions for tax cuts. I'm sure everybody would vote for that. Everybody would, would, would welcome that.
There is discussion that Treasury might give some guidance that you should not replace. You can't decrease your budget, I believe.
Right, that's right. Yes, that's right. In the GFA, GFOA documents that speak to that.
Other questions or items on this?
No, but you know, think about that though. I mean, you can't reduce your budget. Sure, that, that would, would be structuring and make it not certainly not eligible. But if, if, as it said, as the, as the presentation said, if tax cuts or local stimulus have no restrictions, that in essence does reduce your budget without reducing your budget, which frees up your budget money to do other items. That's something that we need to really look at. Yeah, yeah, you're right. I mean, this, 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 this kind of expenditures that are, that are needed, Jim, can be, can qualify in money that we would have to spend anyway going forward.
Correct.
Could be used in another method, possibly. Yes.
Go ahead, pardon.
Yeah, so I think what we had talked about at a previous meeting was to have a focused work session or retreat, whatever terminology you want to use, focus work sessions, fine with us. We'd obviously talked about that for later in April. You know, you all had voiced interest in an in-person session for that. And that was going to talk about elections. I think this is a natural sort of one, two. AB, I mean, you know, we have part of the day for the elections discussion, part of the day, part of the time for this conversation. The good news is the ARP conversation does not have a, a fast ticking clock like the earmarks. The earmarks will be racing around with Jennifer and reaching out to congressional staff members. Good news is we have good relationships there. And we learn a little more each day from those congressional staff members. So we'll, we'll be managing that and keep you updated as we learn more about the earmarks piece. But there is no clock ticking dramatically on the ARP. So that certainly lends itself to a late April conversation, if that's a pleasure of City Council.
So have we had contact with our senators yet?
At a very cursory level, they still don't have their rules published. But they definitely know that we are interested and we have a handful of ideas to share with them when they're ready for them.
And it's Ms. Ms. Manning, she's very open.
Jennifer Emo was in touch with Ms. Manning's staff on Friday and have, had good conversation with them. And I guess we're, they have told us to get our materials together and get them, get them written materials. So.
And Representative Bud just has no desire to be part of this, is that correct?
Correct. Rachel, anything else on the contact with Representative Manning?
No, I don't think so. She was just certainly open to hearing about our projects that are in her district, which runs right up to the Guilford County line. So there are a couple of opportunities there that are on our priority list that would qualify and that she would certainly be willing to consider.
We, we have three projects that you all are all familiar with, that you've heard of before, that are not new projects that are, you know, mostly or if not all in Guilford County. So those are the three that we've, would pitch to her staff.
Do we want to try to set a date for the later in April session? Like we got everybody here. And I believe City Vision already blocks out the twentieth through the twenty-third. Beverly may be able to confirm that. That's NLCM City Vision. So we may be looking at the week after that. It'd be after our second council meeting. The week starting on Monday, the twenty-sixth. Do we want to aim for another Tuesday meeting? We're going to mix things up with a Wednesday meeting.
Seven o'clock for me.
Beverly, do you have anything on the master calendar that would?
I'm looking now. So City Vision is scheduled the week of the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second. So we would miss that if we did go into the week of the twenty-sixth. And I don't see anything on the calendars I have access to that have any conflicts for that week.
Kathy, the twenty-seventh was a good day for you. Council members, any objection to the twenty-seventh?
I, I won't be available that week.
That, that whole week?
That whole week.
Okay. All right. Do we want to aim for the nineteenth on the week before, which is the Monday, which would be right before our Tuesday council meeting and also before City Vision? How does that look for folks?
That would work for me. Our normal time?
One more time for a retreat. So partial day or starting nine o'clock, ten o'clock in the morning?
I mean, I've got conflicts throughout the day. So I could, I could be in and out of it, but I couldn't commit that quick. A half day, I could not. About five o'clock? To seven or something, two hours. That, that's fine. Would that work? Yeah.
Staff, do we feel like two hours is enough time for kind of two lady topics like that? My thought would be to maybe start a little earlier. Could we start at like three?
I can't.
Jim, how early could you start? Five?
And as Harden mentioned, from a staff perspective, I think even if you guys needed to, you know, push to early May rather than middle of April, as far as the ARP funds go, there's, there's no ticking time clock, as Harden mentioned.
How does May third, we have a normal work session that day. We could attempt to blend work session and extend to topics.
Fair the other option, we could start on the nineteenth and try to order the discussion and what we don't finish moves to the third.
It's a thought, yeah.
Yeah, I like that. I do too.
Additional, middle time to do additional research on questions we might have.
Yeah.
Okay. Tentative five to seven and whatever we don't get accomplished by seven, we'll punt to the third.
Yeah.
Any objections, Bob?
No problem. That's good.
That might give us some time. The questions come up, we have time to research it. Yeah, between the next, the next month and two weeks later.
All right. Kathy, it's good for you.
The nineteenth?
Yeah, do the nineteenth, five to seven, and then continuation on the third.
Yes.
All right, very good.
And would you all prefer, as the first agenda item, ARP or elections?
ARP.
Yeah, I think ARP's more timely.
Yeah. Agreed.
Well, you know, as like mentioned, if We can always, like mentioned, if we feel like we need further information, we can always pause that discussion and then work on some election that same meeting. Any catering preferences, or do we want to leave that up to staff's expertise?
Beverly's got about 14 months worth of vendors begging her for business, so she'll, she'll probably get us the best deals she can.
I've got about 14 months of built-up appetite for missing our work session catering, so should work up.
Does anybody have a special request? Oh, I didn't mean to interrupt that question.
Oh, we have 14 months. I thought you were gonna say we have 14 months of food stored up.
Been sitting in the fridge. Thomas hasn't brought his Tupperware by yet.
Yeah, I'll send some humor sometime, guys.
We miss our work session family. It's so far away. All right. With that, any other questions on this?
Luisa, great job on your first presentation.
Thank you. Thanks for your questions. I will stop sharing now, but have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Luisa. I'm particularly excited. We, we have Luisa on board. This was something the North Carolina League of Municipalities discussed a couple of years ago, and Burlington did not get to participate in the first round. But I'm excited that we are participating in the program. So really a tremendous opportunity to help cities make sure that we're able to stay current and recruit some of the best and the brightest local candidates, local students from across the state, and help them find a place in our communities and a way to influence good change. So we're excited to have Luisa on the team and on the ground.
Yes.
All right, with that, we will move on to item E, our boards and commissions reports. At this time, I'll recognize Planning Manager Conrad Almetto.
Great. If I can allow, be allowed to share access. Let me see, am I able to do that right now?
Conrad, you already have it, sir. You already co-host.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's see, let me get my.
All right, we've got that screen up.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Let me just go to the right item here. This is an, this item is a conventional rezoning request with no conditions to rezone a parcel totaling 5.68 acres in size from office institutional to high-density residential. The property is located at the northeast intersection of Grand Oaks Boulevard and Kirkpatrick Road. The comprehensive land use plan calls for this area to be regional commercial and suburban residential. The proposed zoning, while inconsistent with the land use plan, is determined to be compatible with the existing residential uses. As such, staff is recommending approval of those rezoning requests. The request was considered at the March 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, where a motion was made to recommend approval of the request with seven votes in favor and zero votes against. There were no public comments received on this item, and I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council on this one? This is just east of the one we did at our last session, right? Like, that was Huffman and Grand Oaks?
Yes, yes, sir. That one would be this property right here on that southeast corner.
All right, without any questions, you want to move on to the next property?
Sure. Good evening again, Mayor and members of council. This is a conditional rezoning request with no conditions to rezone three parcels totaling 6.46 acres in size from medium-density residential to light industrial. The properties are located on the west side of Maple Avenue, south of the intersection of Anthony Road and Maple Avenue. The comprehensive land use plan calls for the area to be general industrial. The proposed zoning is consistent with the land use plan and is determined to be compatible with the existing industrial uses to the west. As such, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request. The request was considered at the March 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, where a motion was made to recommend denial of the request with four votes in favor and three votes against. There were public comments received on this item when presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Concerns raised were impacts to existing residences, traffic, noise, lighting, property values, and potential businesses. And I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Is this vacant land now?
Oh, no, Councilwoman Hikes, there are three existing residences, one on each property.
Can you confirm that the planning zoning approved this or denied this?
There, it was a nod, it was a motion to recommend denial that was supported with four votes in favor of and three in against.
Okay, so they denied the?
Correct.
So what, are those houses, are they occupied? Are they like rentals or something?
It's my understanding that they are rental properties, sir.
Any other questions from council regarding this item?
I have a, I have a question, Conrad. In other words, there was a motion to deny, which, but I guess, explain that again, what they did. Was there subsequent motion or just a motion to deny?
It was a motion to deny, to recommend denial.
Right, okay. And then it, that failed? No, or it passed?
Correct, that motion passed.
I was just wondering from a parliamentary point of view, you know, it should have been a follow-up, you know, to what, another motion, but I just needed hearing it there. I think that's the message. So anyway, that's just one clarification. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? So will this be appealed then to council, or just if they denied it?
It, it's their recommendation to not, to deny the request.
Okay.
But no appeal yet, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
Conrad, how much property is involved in these three lots?
These three properties total 6.46 acres in size.
And the concern was adjacent property owners was noise and traffic.
So there were some public responses regarding noise, traffic, impacts on existing residences. We had quite a few calls come in from the, the residences across the street here, and then also some questions about property values, potential businesses, and lighting.
But there was no plan put on the table in terms of what might be done with that property. Is that correct?
At this time, we're just considering the, the conventional rezoning, so we're not considering any potential plans, but to your points, sir, the, we would, we would evaluate any plans at the technical review committee level when they were to come in for, if it was rezoned.
Any other questions on this? And these back up to industrial properties, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. You have one more report, it looks like?
Yes, sir. Since my last item, let me stop share here and let introduce. I'd like to introduce Mr. Chad Meadows with Code Right Planners, who will be giving a presentation on our most recent UDO updates.
Very good. Welcome, Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, can you guys see my screen?
We can see your screen.
Outstanding. Thank you for the chance to be here tonight. We, I, I know I always say this, but I, I truly mean it tonight. We've got a very fast couple of small items to take care of. So with your permission, I will just jump right in and we can get to it. First is some minor adjustments to our motor vehicle signage provisions to recognize fleet vehicles located on the same parcel where the business is located. And the second are some adjustments to maximum allowable wall sign area on multi-story buildings. And I think you guys may have chatted a little bit with staff about some of the concepts behind this wall sign change that we're gonna suggest to you tonight. So with that, let me jump right in. As to vehicle signs, so the current regulations basically prohibit any signage affixed to a stationary vehicle that remains in the same location for more than 30 days. And this was proving to be problematic for folks who had fleet vehicles, who, you know, basically needed to park those vehicles on a site, and because they were in a fleet, they had signage on the doors or what have you. So this was becoming a problem. We were also having some issues with code enforcement staff regarding the 30-day tracking mechanisms. So what we've tried to do is simplify the standards in two basic ways. The first way is that we've created a new exclusion from the signage regulations for vehicular signage on a vehicle that's located on the same lot or within the same development of the business that it's advertising. So if you happen to have fleet vehicles, you can park your fleet vehicles in your parking lot and not worry about, you know, running afoul of the sign regulations. So that is the exclusion language that you see noted in number seven on my screen. So that's the one element. The second element was we wanted to further clarify that in those situations where you might have a vehicle with signage on it that you wanted to park elsewhere and advertise your business, we wanted to clarify that that was, remained prohibited. So what we've done is added some language to number 14 in the prohibitions category that basically says, if you've got signage affixed to a stationary motor vehicle, boat, or trailer on a, on a lot or site that's, that's not occupied by the business being advertised, that's prohibited. Again, no limitation. If you happen to be on site, let's say you're a carpenter and you're working on a, on a building or you're working on someone's home, no problem having your vehicle there while you're servicing or, or applying the trade. But if you were a carpenter and you wanted to park your work truck in the Kmart parking lot, that would not be allowed because you would be off-site. So that's, that is the change that we are proposing for the vehicular signs. Again, recognizing the fleet vehicles and prohibiting placement or parking of, of vehicles with signs on lots or sites that are not where the commercial business is located. Any questions on this?
On that, that second one, is there a timeframe attached to?
No timeframe, because the timeframe was, the tracking of the timeframe was proving to be an issue. So it's, it's just outright prohibited. I, I will mention to you that we had a lot of discussion with the, the planning board about this. We talked, this issue was before the planning board on the 22nd of March. And there was some concern that, you know, th- this change might create a possibility for larger vehicular signs. We talked about it. We think we've covered those issues and those problems. But they've asked that, you know, staff come back in December of this year and just give them a report on, on how, you know, if this change is approved, how this change is working. It's really the code enforcement staff that are driving these two changes because of, of, you know, real-world practical challenges they've experienced in the field with how their regulations were drafted originally. So we had a lot of discussion, but, you know, ultimately, they felt comfortable, the planning board felt comfortable that this language would be okay.
So that second item prevents you from wrapping a box truck and using it as a big billboard?
If it's, if your box truck is located elsewhere than the business that you're advertising, that's prohibited. And so, you know, can you wrap your box truck with signage and park that box truck in your parking lot? The answer to that question is that, that, there, there is no prohibition against that in this regulation. Though, there's not necessarily any prohibition like that in the current regulation either. I would say if that proves to be a problem, you know, one of the things that we discussed with the planning board was another minor tweak to the regulation that prevented any vehicular signage from being larger than the, the wall signage that were, that was permitted for the building.
Which makes sense, yeah. If we're trying to kind of keep signs from being too monolithic in front of a building, and then you just park a truck that's bigger than the sign out there.
Right.
Then, yeah, it's undermined the aesthetic that I think we've agreed we want to create.
Right, right. So we, we chatted about that, and I think their thought was, let's, let's see how this works. And if there's any issues, and if we, if we have a problem with that, that's a fairly easy adjustment we can make to the exclusion language in number seven in, in subsection E above this one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, subsection D above this one.
But in the first section, I know we've got companies like Sawyer Exterminating that's sitting on Ellamance Road with tons of their pickup trucks and vehicles. So.
Right.
Nearly they're just parked there because that's where they park their fleet, and that's not an issue with this.
That's correct. And, and so that was, there was some confusion and some issues. So we, that's why that, that's why we're suggesting that exclusion be drafted in that way.
Okay. Council members, any questions on this? All right.
This gives me.
Yes, ma'am.
It feels as though we're trying to get, we're trying to chase something that we're not going to be able to chase, that people are going to figure out a new way to get around this, to do what they want to do. But I'm happy to wait and see how it works out.
My advice is, let's see if we, if, if people start to abuse this, and if so, then I think it's very easy for us to apply some limitations on vehicular signage size.
Any other counsel preferences on that? Proactive or wait and see?
Well, you know, the, the thing about the UDO is we always knew it was going to be a living document. We always knew that we were going to be working on it along the way. And quite honestly, I find it refreshing that so many people are calling as they're finding things out, and we're getting some citizen feedback on it. And I don't know about the, the rest of my colleagues, but I, I've probably talked to 30 or 40 small business owners in the last three months on various things. So it, it really gives you an opportunity to really get their feedback and understand where they're coming from to make a more comprehensive change that might be better for everybody. So I, I'm all open to, let's give this a shot, see what it looks like, take some feedback, and then we can go forward.
Any other counsel?
Mayor, may I ask just for a clarification for Chad? So Chad, on the example of folks ending up at Harris Teeter or Home Depot or somewhere like that, that happened to be in a trade, I'm a electrician with a lot of signs on my truck, but I'm shopping at Harris Teeter for a while. That's not a problem, right?
No, sir. I, I would anticipate that code enforcement would not seek a citation for, you know, someone parking an electrician's vehicle at a Home Depot or something like that. Where things might get, where they might, a question might arise is if that electrician's van, again, just using that example, if that electrician's van remained on site in the same location for, say, multiple days or a week, you might find that code enforcement officer, you know, going into the, to the, to the store and saying, hey, I've noticed this vehicle that's out here in the front. Are they working on anything here in the store right now? Yes or no? And if the answer is no, then that's, that would likely be a violation. And they would need to, you know, they would cite that, that electrician in, in that example.
Thanks, Chad.
Any other questions on this item? All right, what else have we got for us, Chad?
Okay, one more. And this is, this is, what we are trying to do is bring some parity to our wall sign regulations, and at the same time, one of the themes that you guys have, have heard us talk about a lot is, is really equalizing the development standards for the CBD district and really supporting, you know, the Uh, and really supporting, you know, the the core of Burlington. And so this is, you know, another one of those adjustments that we're making to, to. Um, recognize, support and encourage development in the CBD. And also to support uh mixed use development. So that's really the the impetus. Of of the wall sign change that I'm going to talk to you about now. So on the screen is. Um, a a segment of the current sign code. It's on page five dash one oh six. And this is the summary dimensional standards for wall signage. And we have done two things here with this table. The first thing that we've done is we have picked up the standards. That apply to land within the mixed use, the CBD and the planned development district for downtown. And incorporated those with the other um non-residential slash commercial district sign rules. So basically what we're doing is is treating mixed use, CBD and the PDD districts the same. As we treat everybody else. Okay, so that's one change that that we've made. Um, the impact to that change is that the maximum allowable wall sign. Base area for development in MX, CBD and PDD has increased. Um, we have gotten feedback from the development community that thirty-two square feet is insufficient. Um, and we're trying to bring some parity um to those districts. Uh, so that, you know, we can encourage development, you know, in in these places like CBD and MX where we really would like to see. Um, you know, maximization of the investment the city's made in infrastructure. So we want to, we want to foster development in those districts. So we're bringing them into alignment with our other non-residential districts in terms of how we treat wall signage. So that's one change. The second change is that we are recognizing. Instances where four or five or six-story buildings. Um, need to have some slightly different wall signage rules. Given that that signage isn't at eye level. That's, you're you're not likely to see that signage as easily from your vehicle. Um, or if you're walking, especially if it's, say, you know, ten stories up uh on on the building wall. And so basically what we, what we are suggesting is that we allow. Um, a fairly modest increase in how we calculate the maximum allowable amount of wall sign. Area based on the story that the building is located. So I'm going to show you a picture. Um, now to kind of explain um how how the math works. But, you know, the gist of these changes are, one, parity for MX, CBD and PDD with the other. Non-residential districts and two, recognizing that the taller the building, the the wall signage allowance should be increased. But doesn't exceed the maximum allowed for for everybody. It's just that we're recognizing that those signs are harder to see. So let me give you uh an illustration. This is the illustration from the same page. Um, it actually might be on the previous page now. It might be on five dash one oh five, given that it's a long illustration. But basically, let me walk you through this. We have two examples here on the screen. There is a two-story building, um, you know, and let's just call this, let's just say it's the CBD district. Okay, so here's a two-story building in the CBD district. It's fifty feet wide, okay? We calculate wall sign by multiplying the, this ratio number, one point five square feet of sign area. Times how wide the building is at the street frontage. In this instance, fifty feet. So this two-story building in the CBD district gets a seventy-five square foot wall sign, okay? So that's, that's basically how the, how it works. This hasn't changed. We haven't made any adjustments to, to this. Side of the equation. Where we made some adjustments was if you had a building that was more than three stories tall, okay? After the third story, we wanted to recognize that the wall signage was harder to see. From your vehicle or from a pedestrian's point of view. And so we wanted to allow larger wall sign face area. For that building. So let me walk you through how this works. The equation is identical. Here's a fifty-foot wide building. It's in the CBD district, okay? If it was two stories, it would be one and a half square feet of sign area times the the building facade. Here on our five-story example, we have our regular ratio, one and a half square feet of sign area. However, we're adding an additional half a square foot of sign face area to the ratio. For each building story above the third story. So in this instance, this wall signs on the fifth floor, okay? So the calculation is created by using the one point five number. Plus the half a square foot that comes from the fourth floor, plus the half a square foot floor uh face area that comes from the fifth floor. So the equation is one point five plus one times the building facade length. So in this instance, it's a hundred and twenty-five square feet. So this five-story building gets a hundred and twenty-five square foot sign. The two-story building, a seventy-five square foot sign. And this additive element, this half a square foot in sign face area. Increases with each additional uh building story um as you go up, okay? However, one last point to make to you. Um, there are caps, okay? For the primary facade of any building, um, you know, in Burlington. Your wall sign can be no larger than three hundred square feet, period. So those caps stay in place. Whether you've got a two-story building or a five-story building or a ten-story building, you still have these ultimate. Wall sign face area caps of three hundred square feet for the primary facade. And a hundred and fifty square feet for a secondary or tertiary facade. So those caps remain in place. What's changed is that we are recognizing that wall signs on higher stories need to be a little bit larger. They're allowed to be a little bit larger based on this additional half a square foot of face area. Times the building facade length for each additional story above three. So. We've worked a lot with this calculation. It's fairly robust. Hopefully, it's going to be very simple for us to apply. Um, I should also say to you that the maximum sign face area flows from which building story. The wall sign is located on. So in this instance, you'll note down here at the bottom, there's a note on this illustration. If, so this wall sign uh illustration shows a wall sign on the fifth floor. If this wall sign happened to be on the fourth floor instead of the fifth floor, um, it would only be allowed to be a hundred square feet. Why? Because it's only allowed to have the half a square foot addition once. Because you're going from the third floor to the fourth floor. If you, if they were on the fifth floor, they'd get it twice. If it was uh on the sixth floor, um, your maximum wall sign area would go from one twenty-five to one fifty. So you get a half a square foot for each story.
So Chad, in that case, if the, that tall five-story building owner wanted to have a sign like in the other example.
Right.
More pedestrian focused, then they would be capped at the, the normal.
That's correct. So that, if if they so chose, let's say they wanted to have a sign right at the storefront. And they wanted to have a sign at the top, okay? As long as they're allowed to have more than one wall sign per wall. And as long as the total amount of wall sign area on that primary facade doesn't exceed the three hundred square feet, they're good to go. Does that make sense?
It does. Any questions from council on that?
So what, basically in Burlington, we're talking about two buildings that this would apply to. Is that right? Anybody have, I'm just thinking of the jewelry and lab corps.
S- somebody may build a, a new building that might be taller than three stories. But that would be a great thing if that happened.
Other questions? Bigger, better Burlington. We have dreams.
Indeed. Um, so for, in terms of next steps, let me just mention that um, the, the planning board did. Uh, approve this. There was one in opposition and I think the opposition flowed from concern about the vehicular signs. Um, but that ultimately we did have a motion for approval. Um, and that our plan would be to go to a public hearing um with this material on the twentieth of uh of April.
Very good.
And that's, that's everything I have.
Good.
If I may, mayor, um, just to always remind that that would include the two rezonings that was just presented also. In addition to this U D O text amendment to be set for public hearings on the April twentieth.
Very good. So any objection from council to setting those hearings?
All right, real quick, uh, the one that was recommended for denial by P and Z. That would not go to the April twentieth, correct, unless we received an appeal at some point? Is that correct?
Oh, I was researching that myself here. Um, I can have an answer about tomorrow morning.
Any other questions? All right. Appreciate that. Chad, thanks for joining us again.
Thanks, guys. You guys have a great evening. Thank you so much.
You too. All right, with that, we'll move to the last item on our agenda. Item F, our city manager report, adopt a park and carousel. This time we'll recognize manager Harden Watkins.
Do we have a traffic commission?
Oh, sorry, traffic commission. My, my apologies. I got ahead of ourselves. We got so into the weeds on that one. Um, so Mike Nun uh with traffic, no, sorry.
I can handle if you like, if you like, mayor. I just wanted to quick, do a quick intro. Uh, Brian Tenet will present this, but Brian is our new uh transportation engineer and operations manager. Uh, he's from our area, from North Carolina, has been the Denver area for the last few years. He's glad to be back here with us. He's moved to Burlington, uh, and I'll let him speak a little bit more of this. Brian Tenet will be uh presenting the traffic commission items.
Welcome, Brian.
Uh, thank you, mayor and council. Uh, yes, uh, ple- pleased to be back uh here in North Carolina. See, I'm just tongue-tied already. Uh, been here with the city of Burlington for about a month now and uh. Looking forward to presenting these uh items. So I'll go ahead and uh share my screen with you guys. All right.
Got that screen up?
Perfect. Uh, so the first request uh was to install speed humps along Fountain Place. Uh, from West Davis Street to West Combe Street. The requirements for installing speed humps were met for the city's traffic calming policy. Uh, this was a request from residents along Fountain Place with over eighty-five percent of the residents signing the petition. Uh, staff recommended the installation of the speed humps uh to traffic commission. And the vote to install the speed humps uh was made unanimous uh on the March eighteenth uh commission meeting. Uh, there were no objections uh by residents on Fountain Place uh for the install of speed humps. And at this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Sixteen years, that's been talked about for sixteen years.
People still fly through there.
How, how was uh police and fire? Did they have any concerns on that?
Uh, so it did go through uh police and fire. Um, they didn't have any concerns. As long as it was meeting the uh uh recommendation of not being on a uh primary street. Uh, as well as the standards uh for the traffic humps uh meeting the fires' request uh to traverse them.
So this was initiated by staff, not by the residents?
Uh, no, this was initiated by the residents.
Kathy, I think this is, when we wrote this speed common policy, it was surrounding conversation that came from. This area, but way back when.
Arlington Street.
Any other questions from council regarding this item? All right, Brian, we got a second item?
We don't have any share, um, cost sharing with residents on something like this when we have that many people involved, do we?
Uh, no, we do not. Councilman, uh, Hayes, or. Aix, excuse me, Councilwoman Hikes.
It, the history of this was uh, a number of years ago. Uh, and the, the controversy uh then was. People on some of the adjacent streets were thinking that um, it would. Actually eliminate some of the traffic on Fountain Place and take traffics on, take traffic on some of the smaller streets. Which um, at that point in time, our planning department did not think would, would take place. Um, from over the years, unfortunately, I believe it's uh, this issue may have even increased more. Um, than it once was. And with the community changing in terms of. The number of kids along this, this street and plus with the development of Willowbrook. Um, or the albor- alberdom at Willowbrook down below this. Um, uh, I think uh, again, with addition of the four-way stop signs and so forth, this, this makes, this makes perfect sense.
I think, and Nolan, you may recall this, and uh, Brian, you may know, but uh, Kathy, to answer your question. I think when that policy was written, there was a, it was written so that if there was no budget for the city to install those. That residents could, could self-fund it. Is that not right, or am I mistaken on that?
I believe that's kept in policy, isn't it, Brian?
It is. Uh, so they can self-fund it uh as long as it is meeting the requirements. And so in this case, they can uh self-fund it if there was no funds.
Jim, you were on the traffic commission then, were you not? Correct, yeah.
That's why it's so vivid, this member.
Oh, I'm telling you, this one, Nolan will remember because Nolan was uh, he was our uh liaison to staff at the time. And um, this, this has been at least sixteen, seventeen years this has been discussed.
Yeah, so CeeLo was on the traffic commission at the time too, so.
I, I absolutely see the need for this. We, I pick up a friend of, actually between Combe Street and Church. And it's pretty terrifying to back out of her driveway because of the speeding cars that come around from Church Street. And then I think we've had a recent death on uh around the fountain, just in the last several months. So people are really taking terrible risks in the speed they're going on Fountain Place. But I ke- I kept thinking about different ways to get cross-city. And except for uh Church Street, this is the next place that they can get across the city until you get. What, um, pretty far till Rockwood. And even there, you can't get all the way to the north side of Burlington.
You, you're a hundred percent correct. That's, the fire department um utilize that. I I recall several conversations about the fire department utilizing that as a thoroughfare to get across. Uh, and and obviously that may have changed, but uh, or or police as well. But um, that was, that was a, a pretty significant topic of discussion back in the day. Was, would this impede their ability to to get?
Now, it's already a traffic uh, uh. Hop further up uh, north of of West Davis, right? On the street, if you go directly up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Between Charles or Davis.
Collinger, yeah.
Collinger.
Yeah, yeah. And Kathy brings up a valid point too, and I I know it's not a, a long distance. But it's surprising the number of people when they turn off Church Street, how much speed they build up. And that's, that uh relatively short area before they get to Combe too.
Yeah.
Um, with a little turn there of all things too.
See, around the cars.
Yeah, there's always cars parked on the street, so folks are zigzagging through.
Yeah, it sure is.
There'll also be, uh, as you recall, as part of the arboretum, uh, another table put in at uh East Willowbrook and Fountain to the south.
So there'll be.
That'll be reported on me as well.
I think all that's, I think that all that makes sense in terms of safety.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this item? Any objection to adding this to the consent agenda for tomorrow?
I maybe we do that. Yeah, I would agree.
I also think we should be looking at how, it seems like the, the cross part on the north is Webb Avenue. And I'm just wondering whether we have enough connections there. I don't know what's possible in terms of how we would do that, but it does seem to be an issue with that much traffic on that street as well as Webb and, I mean, Fisher and Church. It's just, it's a lot of traffic, a lot of people moving in that direction.
They're growing, so.
Thinking about Rockwood and continuing that, we could keep talking about it, but we don't do it.
Well, maybe we've got some, we've got some monies that just was bestowed upon us. Maybe there would be some good use for that.
Yep.
Something for our discussion on the nineteenth. So. All right, Brian, you got another one for us?
Oh, yes, sir. All right, the second request was to reduce the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour along Trail Two from South Meven Street to Chapel Hill Road. The speed limit reduction will help reduce the number of speeding violations as recommended by Burlington P D. Staff recommended the reduction of speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour at the May, excuse me, March eighteenth traffic commission meeting. Traffic commission approved the recommendation unanimously. And there was no comments by residents at this time. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council? Brian, our standard citywide nonposted limit is thirty-five, right?
That's correct.
So that means this street originally had a thirty-five, just like any other nonposted residential street in the community?
Yes.
Which, fifty-five is fast. So I can see why twenty-five would be a good change. Have we ever looked at, and I know, Brian, you're recently with us, so I'm, I'm not expecting you to answer this, but have we ever looked at lowering the citywide nonposted limit to something more pedestrian friendly, like twenty-five?
I don't recall that being a topic that was researched in the past. It may come up in discussion. I have some memory, great study on it, but.
You know, the, the speed limit discussions I remember in the past from traffic commission where residents were requesting speed limits be lowered. It, in some regards, it was actually creating a false sense of security that they were thinking just because the speed limit signs were lowered or like children at play signs put out there would give you a false sense of security. And then you're, you're setting yourself up for potential worse situation. Anytime that, that ever came up of speed limit reduction, it was contemplated very carefully.
And that's.
Brought up about fifteen times on Mechanic Street, wasn't it, Jim?
Yep.
Yeah, the public education and changing public behavior is monumental task.
Yes. I just know you always refer to the M U T C D manual. Isn't that right, Nolan?
I'm surprised.
Or the Ash to Green Book. Isn't that it?
That's correct. Good memory.
Do I get, do I get extra points for that?
You get some points for that.
I can't believe you remembered that, Jim.
Nolan hammered it into you.
With the physical book?
Yes, with the book.
Any other questions on this? Otherwise, any objections to including this on the consent agenda for tomorrow? All right.
And these are on the agenda.
Brian, thanks for that presentation. Sorry, we almost skipped over you there and we are glad to have you on the team. So welcome to Burlington.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Stop share.
All right, now we will call on City Manager Harden Watkins for item F, our city manager report, adopt a park and carousel.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members and Mayor, you got a memo from me, March thirty-first, it provides a little more additional background. We'll cover some of that this evening. So you have that on these two topics. So one is adopt the park and two is carousel. So I'm going to yield, if we get Tony Law's video up, I'm going to yield the floor to Tony. He's going to walk through the adopt the park and then he's going to throw it back to Rachel for a carousel construction update. And then Tony's going to talk again about Carousel Festival.
Tony, you with us? The technology gremlin struck again.
I saw him on the screen for just a moment. I saw his name on the screen, but with no video and now I don't see it at all. Scott, can you give us an update?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Do we have Tony in our participant list?
Tony was listed as.
Tony's name now with no video, but it looks like he's not muted. Tony, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Tony. We can't see you, but you want to go ahead? Do you want?
That, that's fine. I tried to start my video, but I'm not allowed to do that. But anyway, maybe Scott will get that fixed.
Thank you, Tony.
There you go.
Okay, you got me now. All right, thank you. The first item is some good news. Adopt a park. You might recognize part of that name from Adopt a Street or Road that was in play a few years back, really popular. And this is sort of a piggyback on that and, but, but to help our parks, the appearance of our parks. And so we have taken this item to our recreation commission back in November and they all were in favor of it. And we think it's going to add a lot to the appearance of our parks, which we are very proud of our park appearance, but we have a lot of streams that come through a lot of our parks and every time it rains, we get another load of trash that comes in and all of it doesn't wash out. So and cleanup is just one part about this, but this, this program, you can see on, on the screen that individuals, neighborhood associations, church groups, schools, businesses, scouts, service, or any, anybody can participate in this that would like to devote some time to this type of activity. And certainly cleanups are a big part of it, but there are also some other projects that they can do, some landscaping, possibly some painting, smaller projects, not any, any real major projects. But like I say, the, the focus is on the appearance of the parks and getting people interested in, in helping us maintain the parks and taking more pride in them. So the special project is the third bullet point on there says by approval, that would, if there's something that we or somebody brings to us, we'll look at that and see if, if a volunteer group can handle it to make sure before we, we let somebody start something that may be a little bit too big for them. But anyway, the items that are in the first two bullet points are very easy for them to do. And, and we will certainly be a part of that cleanup and, and whatever it is of providing trash bags and, and pickup sticks and so forth to, to help them achieve that. And then they can put the litter in the bags in a certain area and we'll come by and pick it up and dispose of it. So similar to what, what you see on the streets, you know, if somebody's adopted one of those. And like I say, we'll provide a lot of the, the utensils or that they need to work and, and some of the supplies that, you know, like trash bags that, that they don't have to buy themselves. There's some recognition for the people that, that adopt the park, although it's not immediate recognition. It is on social media and city, and a city website, but, but if they want a sign put up like you used to see along the street, this group has adopted this street, that takes a year effort. We asked if they're going to do an adopt a park project that they, they, they commit to four cleanups or whatever the projects are in a year. And, and if they complete that and, and they agree to do it another year, then we'll put up a sign saying this park is adopted by whoever. And so like all of our volunteers, they'll, they'll have to sign a waiver of liability. We, we already have that in place. Then go by the safety guidelines and, and these would more than likely be supervised activities where we'd have a staff member work with, with the group, especially if it's along a stream cleanup or something like that. Where, where we want to make sure that they're not doing any damage to the buffer areas or whatever. I want to mention Melissa Who's. We haven't actually put a person in charge of this yet, but Melissa Who's, who's on our staff, does our outdoor programs and anything else we assign her to. She's very good about being very diverse and versatile and everything and very talented. But she, she put this program together over several months, did a lot of research. As far as I know, there's not anybody else in Alamance County doing this, but there are some other recreation departments across the state that are, that have similar programs, but and I'm not saying Melissa will be our coordinator. We'll, we'll decide who's the best person will be for that, but we, we are certainly looking forward to this project, making our parks look even better than they are right now. And we're very proud of, of the way we keep our parks. Wearing terror, you know, causes some stuff that we, we don't like to see, but we try to fix that as, as quickly as we can. But, but I think this will be a big plus to the city and to the appearance of the parks and, and hopefully instill a lot of community pride in our, in our parks and our programs through all the citizens of Burlington. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about this if you would like. We're, we've been working on this. We're leading up to rolling it out in May. So a little less than a month to go and hopefully we'll, we've already gotten some businesses and so forth that have indicated an interest in this. And so we're hoping that we get a lot of our parks adopted and, and start some, some nice projects that'll, that'll make them even better. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about this.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions from council regarding this new adopt a park program? I'll tell you, Tony, I get lots of citizen questions about trash in our community, whether it's roadside, whether it's like wherever the trash ends up. People really don't like to see that out there. So they're always asking for solutions for how we can keep our community clean and beautiful.
Absolutely. Litter is a very bad pet peeve of me. I'm, I can't understand why people, when they ride down the streets, throw their trash out while they can't just keep it in their car or vehicle, get to their destination and dispose of it properly. I don't know why they have to think that throwing it out the window is a better idea.
Me neither.
If there are other questions, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel to give you an update on our construction going on in City Park, which has created a lot of community interest.
It's a big project. Go ahead.
Absolutely. I believe you all received a memo earlier addressing both of these topics, but just to reiterate, there is a lot going on in City Park and our community engagement division has been working with recreation and parks to brand that as City Park Improvements, which is a little bit more holistic. So that covers the construction of the Carousel House, the Carousel Restoration, the tree removal project across the creek, the creek mitigation efforts and a bio-retention cell that's happening near the splash park and the bathroom that was finished last year. So kind of packaging all of those things that are going on at once and communicating that with the community. But as far as the construction project goes, as most construction projects end up happening, we've got some delay. Of course, COVID's something we've never dealt with and there have certainly been impacts to both the Carousel Restoration and the Carousel House Construction because of COVID and, and other factors. But Carousel and Carvings in Marion, Ohio had a significant shutdown during the beginning phases of COVID when we had stay-at-home orders issued across the country. They had a seven-week complete stoppage of work and then they brought people back in shifts, which obviously creates inefficient work. And, and that sort of cascaded as they have carousel projects across the country and we're having to deal with different stay-at-home orders or restrictions depending on the state in which they were traveling to. So it's created some, some difficulty for them, but, but they continue to send us progress reports and are working on our carousel, but their, their completion has been pushed back, which is okay in that this, the completion of the restoration and the install of the carousel has to align with the completion of the Carousel House itself. So those two projects, those two project managers are working together to make sure that those align towards the end of that construction project and we have the house complete and the carousel installed in the timely manner. The carousel construction itself, same thing, COVID impacts and really wet weather this winter. So they're running behind as well. Originally, when we proposed or when we issued that bid, we were looking at probably a late summer twenty-twenty-one opening. At this point, we're looking at probably a late fall. And of course, this soon into the construction that, that's liable to slip farther as well. Of course, we want the project done well and done right. So as that project progresses, we'll be able to come up with a more firm date for completion. But we've all been keeping an eye on that and realizing the community is very excited and we want to celebrate the Carousel House appropriately and the return of the carousel when the time is right. And so I will turn it over to Tony just to talk a little bit about what the Special Events Division has planned for both a grand opening of the Carousel House and then the future of the Carousel Festival.
Excuse me. One question, what, have, do we have plans or have we got too very specific on how we're going to renovate the existing carousel facility?
Yes, I'm happy to speak to that. There's sort of a, an interim and a long-term vision for that facility. I think the interim vision is to go ahead and repair some structural issues with some warped beams and do a little bit of maintenance work, if you will, to make that safe and to use it as a picnic shelter or even music venue. So we can program it in some more passive ways and open that up and allow it to be used as part of City Park. Kind of in the short term. I think the long-term vision, as McAdams identified in the mini master plan discussion around the amusement area was for it eventually to be a concession stand, replacing the existing concession stand when that reaches end of life and a dining area. So the concessions and then dining undercover long-term.
And you mentioned that the tree issue or the taking down of the pine trees. Is there a plan in terms of replanning? Are we hit to that point about what we want that to look like? And, and then how that might impact the walkways? Because if I'm not mistaken, they're asphalt walkways that tree limbs have grown under and through. And, and what the potential trail system would look like leading from the carousel by the train then up that hill back into that more passive area of the park?
Yeah, at this point, staff has, has worked hard to identify which trees are dead, dying, deceased or overcrowded with really a goal of getting rid of those, allowing more sunlight to come in and, and get some more grass and ground cover, which is going to help with the erosion issue. And the sightlines through that side of the park, which right now are a little difficult and, and create some concern for public safety. So thinning the trees is definitely important and New Leaf Society has committed some funds to help replace trees as appropriate. I don't think we'll replace as many and not the same types of trees because of the issues you just mentioned. So I think staff will work closely to determine that that placement still keeps the, the values that this project is meant to further, which is the public safety sightlines, allowing light in, allowing those security cameras, better visions or visuals and preventing that erosion.
Well, well spoken, Rachel, exactly. Harold, one other issue on the old carousel building. The, the floor, if I'm sure you would know, the, when the carousel was taken out, it left a big circle of dirt where the carousel platform was, that was never paved. There is a ring around the outside of the building where, where we had it paved with asphalt where the, the patrons and riders could come in and, and get on the carousel. We will be redoing the floor. We will be redoing the floor. That's in the process now. Both of the, the roof work, ceiling work, beams and, and the floor will be done this spring so that we can open the building this, later this spring and summer for, for use. And the, Rachel mentioned the concession stand cafe type thing. You know, that's one of the possibilities. We're not really sure exactly what we're going to do yet. But at least we're going to get the, that building in use and opened up for people to enjoy. As you know, picnic shelters and, and birthday party places are very popular in, in City Park when the amusement park is operating. And so this gives us another good, good building for that. The Carousel Festival is a normally a fall, third week of September, that weekend activity. Knowing that we're not going to be ready in September for the carousel building or the carousel itself to be operating. We, our special events staff, Emily Crowley and Caitlin Brown have been working on this. And we have, with city administration, we have come to the conclusion that we want to move the Carousel Festival from a fall activity to a spring activity. The September, October, November months have a lot of activity going with, with several things that we do in November and the Christmas. So Halloween in October, several events for that. So it's less crowded in the spring. We have scaled back our Easter. Used to have big Easter egg hunts, which were over in about 10 minutes because it went, went like a vacuum cleaner through there. So we have scaled back those. We still do a few of those in, in, in different parks for, you know, smaller number of participants. But we think the latter part of April, the first part of May will be a good timeline for moving the Carousel Festival. If, if you remember Harold, when we, the, the event that the Carousel Festival was built on was a springtime event called the Sun Festival many years ago. And then it became the Carousel Festival when we did the renovation of the carousel in the mid eighties. And it's, it's been that ever since. So we're going to now look at putting it back in the spring and, and it'll fill a void. Plus, football is a big activity in, in the fall with high school and college games in the area. So we won't have to worry about all that activity going on with less activity in, in the spring. And we think it's going to be a, a better place for the Carousel Festival going forward.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
And honestly, it, it, it appeared to me that we had rain or we had blistering hot weather. It seemed like the third week in September, almost on an annual basis.
We've had both multiple times.
Yes.
If, if there are any questions, we'll be glad to answer. I know Rachel will be glad to answer any questions and I'll be glad to answer any questions too. It's an exciting time. We're looking forward to all this stuff going on. And I know the, the construction site looks a little rough right now around City Park, down Main Street and Church Street. But I want to thank Morgan and John for putting up some banners along the construction fence that make it appear a little bit better and give people an idea of, of what's coming there. So thank you for that, Morgan and John.
Me, back up, Mr. Owen, thank you for the comments. I think, let me clarify what I think I heard you say, which I think is a terrific idea is take a look at the trail, the paved trail from the train station up along Church Street, all the way to where it connects with Overbrook.
That's right. I mean, that, that area, because it's, it's, you've got an elevation there. I, I know we've had some, some citizens and I understand, as always ask about extending the, the train track. And the, the, and at least, at least I know what, what happened when we, when we were involved a little bit over at Pullum Park when they did theirs is, is just the, the grade on that particular type train. It, it just doesn't pull a grade very well. But that area, again, those walkways were put in by our own staff. It was done with asphalt, if I'm not mistaken, and, and the limbs, because the trees were growing in and it, it came uneven and it was not very attractive. I think that's a real nice area for walking in that connection down to the bridge and then back up towards Overbrook, for that matter, to get you throughout the park itself.
We'll, I appreciate you bringing that up. We'll take a look at that and see if we can't figure out an internal solution while we've got so much disruption in the park. This will be the time to do it.
Yeah, it would, it would be. It would be. Yes. Yes.
And, and you're right, Harold. A lot of people have asked, have asked about the train being extended. Pullum Park train goes around the park, a lot bigger ride than ours. But the, the grade that you mentioned, that train won't pull more than a 2% grade. So it has to be pretty much on level ground. So, so we'll, we'll look at that in the future. And that may be a possibility that we come back with a little down the road. But that greenway that you're talking about, that actual greenway starts at Meven Street. Follows the creek, comes around behind the ball field and goes all the way over to the Civitan Shelter at, at the corner of South Church and Overbrook. So, so it's, it's a very used walkway. People on it all the time. So yes, we want to make sure it's, it's, it's nice. And, and the roots do affect asphalt, unfortunately. But we try to repair those areas whenever we get a situation like that. So it won't be a trip hazard.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, Harold. Then it'd be nice if we had kind of a, a solid maintenance schedule on those. Because I know especially some of the, the side trails that go up to Overbrook are pretty bad.
Yeah, you got, and you got kids, small kids can trip of them really easy, as, as anyone for that matter.
Yeah, and small kids and strollers and other stuff.
That, that's exactly right. Yeah.
Path of least resistance and.
Yeah.
Well, as I was thinking through this, as y'all were commenting, it's, would be a shame to get everything done. And then a year from now, 10 months from now, bring construction equipment back in there.
Tear it up.
To tear it up. I mean, if we're going to, we've already got so much disruption and nonusability of portions of the park now. It may be the time to figure out.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I agree. I agree hard because yeah, this, yeah.
Any other questions on these items? I do want to commend staff on those banners around the carousel fence. Those are good. As well as some of the, I think they replaced the fencing along Church Street there along the path. So the improvements make a difference.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, Harden, on this?
That's all I have. Thank you for the time.
Very good. All right, council, that concludes our regular agenda. Any additional council comments this evening? Since we've been talking about trash and cleanliness, I did want to share, I had the opportunity of the week after the tornado hit our community to talk to some of the neighbors over in the Ethan Way neighborhood. And as I was walking around talking to folks, one of the things they expressed was not a concern necessarily about the tornado damage, but concern about cleanliness in the city and trash. And one of the concerns that they brought up that I've, I've heard periodically from residents is concerns about the water and the fluid that drips out of our trash trucks and stains the street. And if you're a runner, like I know Harden and I are, it is unpleasant some days to run on a trash day because the streets do smell. I was wondering, it'd be interesting to find out from staff if there's things that could be done to correct that. The residents were specifically concerned about kind of the way it stained the roads and smelled and also just kind of degraded the look of the community as a mixture of its oil and everything else come out of the trucks. But I imagine there's also a stormwater concern of that getting, we trap it at the landfill and treat it. So I'd imagine there's a desire to not just drop that onto the streets as well.
Be glad to take a look at that with soloways.
And Mayor, let me, you mentioned the storm. Here on Eagleman, between my house and Edgewood, on top of the side streets, there was some, some really substantial damage with the winds coming through. And I, I've had a number of neighbors there who, who dealt with that. And they were very complimentary of the city staff and the street department coming out, getting debris off the streets and, and helping, you know, get the, get the area back and, and a better sense of operation. Because there was some, some pretty large trees that fell in that particular area.
Yeah. Yeah, I heard nothing but positive comments from folks about our first responders being out there as well as city staff getting out there and kind of helping people understand what their responsibility was and where the city could help and how to get stuff to the curb. We really appreciate that relationship that our staff works to build with our residents.
Yeah, they did a nice job.
All right, anything else? All right, with that, we will be adjourned and we will see everyone 7:00 PM tomorrow evening.
Thank you. See you guys later. Night. Take care.